Let's call this meeting the order of our joint meeting in the Assembly and the Assembly School Board. Madam McCork, would you do the roll call, please?
Chair Trini.
Here.
Vice Chair Dunbar.
Here.
Assembly Member Constance. Assembly Member Croft. Assembly Member Dubowski.
She's on her way. Ten minutes, she says.
Assembly Member Dyson.
Here.
Assembly Member LaFrogs.
Here.
Assembly Member Peterson.
Present.
Assembly Member Rivera.
Present.
Assembly Member Steele. Assembly Member Wellington.
Here.
Chair Yavacorum.
Thank you. The School Board.
Tam Agosty Geisler. Betty Davis. Andy Holman. Storm Marseth.
Here.
Dave Donling.
Here.
Kathleen Plunkett.
Here.
Alyssa Snelling.
And our superintendent's here. I think the mayor's around here somewhere. Surely. Uh, let's see. Next time is pledge allegiance. Fred? Could you listen to Fred, sir?
Hello.
Thank you.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Dyson.
Yep.
We have minutes of previous meeting and minutes of a joint meeting on June 9th, 2017. We get a motion to accept those minutes of previous meetings.
Move to seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Asking unanimous consent. Is there any objection? Not seeing any. We've approved those minutes. Addendum to the agenda. I don't see anything on here. Is there any minute's come forward to add to the denim to the agenda? Okay, not seeing any. We'll move down to items of business. Bond and district funded capital projects update. Superintendent, who's doing that?
Uh, thank you. Um, I would, Mr. Tom Rock, are you beginning?
Yes. Superintendent, through the chair, my name's Tom Rock. I'm the chief operating officer. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to spend some time with both the, uh, the school board and the assembly to provide you with an update on some of the capital improvement projects that, uh, the district, uh, completed during, during the summer period. Uh, with me today is, is Mr. Tom Fenessev. He is the senior director for capital planning and construction. And Tom will be the, the actual talking head for this presentation throughout. We're certainly happy to entertain and receive any, any, any questions or comments, uh, throughout the presentation. So, with that from Tom.
Well, actually, um, I just want to add too, uh, this came about, um, in some of the discussion with the assembly and the board in regard to not only when we talked about the, the bond moving forward, even at the, the, um, different community councils, there was an interest in, well, that doesn't seem like a bond project, or this doesn't seem like a bond project. So, this is really an effort to see what are capital projects that the board invests their savings in, um, systematic review of buildings, um, as well as bonds. So, uh, some of our items, well, not very much anymore, um, used to be capital projects, uh, and grants from the state legislature. That's few and far between now. And, uh, or bonds, or district money. And so, um, this is an effort to just demonstrate how those are interwoven together.
Good.
So, sorry about that, Tom.
Let the minister reflect that Andy Holman joined us. Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
All right. Good morning. My name's Tom Fenessev. I'm, uh, senior director of capital planning and construction. And what I'd like to do is share with you all the hard work that my team and the rest of the district has, uh, done this summer. So, this is our back school construction update, and to give you an idea.
One second. Let me recognize the mayor joining us. Welcome, Mr. Mayor. Do you want to come to table, or are you comfortable there?
I'm comfortable here.
Okay.
Okay, so without further ado, next slide, please. Okay, so I've already went over the purpose to inform you, to engage you in discussion and answer any questions you might have about the current capital and future program and where we're going with that. This is my agenda. I'm going to go over what we've done this summer. Uh, we'll, we'll talk about some major maintenance. I brought some other people here, uh, so you can hear from the ground level, and also, uh, what we've got in terms of upcoming projects in our planning and design days. So, our focus mirrors that of the capital improvements plan, the six-year plan that we look at every year, um, to, to guide us in where we prioritize our projects. And that prioritization is, of course, on deferred maintenance, life, uh, safety, and critical buildings and homes, and also, uh, security, just so we have safe schools. So, over the summer, we did 55 projects, $71 million of, of work.
One second. Uh, let the minister reflect that Mr. Dubowski joined us. Ma'am, we've got room up here.
I know you do, but I don't want to turn around, because I'll just sit here for two minutes.
Okay.
Oh, my Pete, okay. See, now you all stop for me anyway.
Go ahead, sir. Sorry.
Sure. And then, that includes 40 projects in planning and design, about $6.4 million. And then, we also had major maintenance projects, uh, which William Blumek will, will cover in our presentation today. And that's 33 projects at, uh, $1.3 million. So, what does that look like? That's 61, that looks over 61,000 square feet of roofs. That's more than a football field, a roof replacement this summer. Uh, increased security, over 200, almost 200 cameras at key points around the schools to provide a safe environment, uh, for our staff and, and children. A reduction in energy consumption, uh, with the, the improvements that we've made in efficiency, uh, were projected to save us $150,000 a year annually in, in energy consumption through efficiency. Also, we've got a lot of feedback from our whole, our, our stakeholders, members of the community, principals, saying, hey, you, you really hit the mark in terms of what you're providing us for our schools. And then, also, very proud of our, um, SBBS sites. We had actually five schools, 17 classrooms, uh, where we were able to provide a, a better environment, uh, for those educators to work. So, next slide, please. So, I'm going to turn it over to Charlie Peters. Charlie defended the district over 16 years, and you may have seen him around at, at Turnigan or, uh, Mountain View or Rabbit Creek this summer, which were his, his main projects. But he's kind of, uh, he, he does it all. He's a full package. So, Charlie, talk to us.
All right. So, we, we ended up doing a major renovation at Glasswood Elementary School. Uh, started last summer and finished up through this summer. Uh, did interior walls, IP securities, uh, main entry. We did the main entry for controlled access, uh, based on district standards, and did some, uh, reduction in energy usage. Turnigan, we also did a lot of major renovation in the same timeframe. Uh, did some security cameras. Uh, main entry, we changed it from the, uh, east side to the west side for better access. Longer drive-in off, uh, Golden Lights for, uh, pickup and drop-off, and a better parking lot. Uh, and again, energy reduction. So, there's Glasswood, the front entry with views in it. There's the new one on the right there. And then, we got the, we added the classroom on the backside of the playground. And here's Turnigan. There's the, the east side where the main entry used to be, and then there's the new main entry on, uh, on the right there, and the classroom renovations, uh, with updated finishes and light. Uh, here's the next one with the, uh, SBBS school-based area real support. Uh, we ended up distributing Mount Ellyamna, uh, over four, five different buildings throughout the district. We did updated finishes and, uh, new furniture for, for the areas. Uh, Golden View, we ended up doing a water line replacement. Uh, had some issues out there, so dug down, ten, 12 feet, and brought it back up, replaced the line. So, here's some of the SBBS photos, uh, what, what it looked like before and what it looked like afterward.
Yeah.
And the back's doing like good. And here's the continuing construction stuff we're doing at West Monroe. Uh, we're doing some structural upgrades based on the earthquake that happened, uh, January of last year. Uh, five additional classrooms and, uh, work on the IMC area. And then Bartlett High School, continuing construction with the cafeteria renovations, uh, more central like areas that I've reviewed. I think that's me.
Any, any questions so far?
Any questions from members? Good job, Charlie. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thanks, Charlie. One of the things I'd like to point out with all these, um, projects, um, I'd, I'd like to thank the board, because they provided over $8 million from the general funds to make sure that a lot of these projects got accomplished, and that included the SBBS projects. Uh, so, you know, without the, the board's help, we couldn't get where we are today. Next, I'd like to bring up Mr. William Blumek. He actually belongs to Maintenance and Operations, but he's the project manager, and he really is an integral person in, uh, making sure that, uh, capital planning, construction, and maintenance and operations are, are synced in our long-term goals and that execution. Please.
Good morning. So, I was saying, I'm the maintenance project manager, uh, for Maintenance and Operations, kind of the only project manager in that world, so I've got a lot that I run around and do it for you. Uh, this year for our major maintenance program, we, um, started a programmatic approach to replacing, um, painting exterior buildings of schools and then replacing carpet in schools. So, we, um, our painting program, we painted five elementary schools, one middle school, one high school. Um, all these schools were in pretty rough condition, as you'll see from the pictures when we get through there. Uh, we utilized the term contractor for the five elementary school projects to help reduce our costs, kind of establish a long-term relationship with the contractor over the next three years, and then being able to maintain, uh, quality control and cost throughout those projects. And we're looking at 15-year cyclical program to go in and be painting every school on a 15-year basis. Uh, that paint is the first line of defense against the elastor weather we deal with around here, keeps the siding and everything in really good condition. Uh, the flooring replacement program, we replaced 78,000 square feet of flooring over at 13 schools. Uh, most of the floor was 20 years older or plus. Uh, this program was developed, uh, focusing on the classrooms that had the highest need. So, we went in and cherry picked classrooms within the school in order to get the, the bed, replace the worst carpet in there. So, we would go in and almost looks like a checkerboard at some schools, simply to try and stretch the, uh, the dollars out and get flooring replaced in the schools that, in the areas that really needed it most. Again, we used a term contractor for that project, establishing a high quality of standard from the beginning that we could carry out throughout the project, and also simplify some of the procurement side of things, where we could go into a school, we could say, okay, we're going to do these four classrooms, these five classrooms, and so on and so forth. And that would reduce some of the confusion by trying to bid it out to multiple smaller contractors.
Mr. Dyson?
I'm sorry, what is it? The term, term contractor?
So, it just means a, a multiple-year contract. So, we set up a, uh...
I got it.
Yep. These are some of the highlights.
Mr. Wood has a question, sir. Mr. Wood.
Maybe I need to buy the more expensive paint. It's 15 years. Really good. I mean, every 15 years you repaint, you're good?
I, I mean, of course, no, but it's what is affordable in the plan.
Okay. So, it's based on your budget, not necessarily...
It's based on what we have, um, because it's the, um, uh, reserve that we're using to plan out savings, um, through operational funds. And so, these are funds that would go in the classrooms, but it's savings, so it's re-appropriated. So, we just couldn't, sorry, William.
No, you're, you're fine.
We couldn't put, um, at this time and looking at all the needs, there was only so much money. So, it, it's, it's better than it is today, because there isn't a, a plan today. So, we established a plan, but, um, with the money that Tom has provided it, it's 15 years.
So, your reds will fade to pink by the time...
We, we just stay away from red.
I think what he wanted to do was, he wanted to buy the type of paint you're using.
Yeah, yeah. There's no magic. It's, it's better than it was, but it's not ideal.
William, go ahead, sir. Sorry.
No, no problem. Uh, so on the top, you've got the Chugiac Elementary School, some before and after pictures. Um, it's washed us out a little bit on the projector, but you can see on the bottom right by that drain that the paint is peeling and coming off. Uh, down here at Willowaw, um, this picture was kind of taken during the process. If you look at all those little tiny dots, those are, um, nail holes or cracks in the siding that the contractor went in and cleaned up and actually filled in all those little areas. And then, we did a slight color change there. Next slide. Uh, this is Ursula Major Elementary School. Um, this was the area of biggest change. You can see the paint chipping and peeling right off some of their, uh, uh, secondary entryways, and then the, you know, now finished, nice finished look on there. Uh, and then Greening and Bartlett, uh, the slideshow's put together before I had final pictures over there. So, those are the last few schools. We're looking at substantial completion, uh, this week, or final completion. We've hit substantial completion a couple of years ago. Uh, for our carpet projects, uh, top is North Star Elementary School. Uh, you can see the, the older carpet puts on there and the new carpet on the right-hand side. Uh, we've gone to a carpet tile as being our new standard. Uh, the idea being that if the, if the tile gets torn, that creates a tripping hazard, we can now go in and replace that one tile or series of tiles, instead of having to replace the whole classroom. So, we can go in and, and maintain this, uh, carpet for a longer period of time. We also utilized a new system at North Star where we actually encapsulated over the top of the carpet to encapsulate the asbestos underneath in the tile, um, that reduced any abatement that we needed out there. So, kind of a, a new process. We experimented on two classrooms out there. We're really happy with the results for it, so we're looking to be able to save some money in the future for people.
Mr. Dubowski, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, William, I wanted to ask you, with the initial cost of the tile versus the regular roll, I would assume the tile's a little bit more expensive, but you're assuming you're going to get your long-term benefit by not having to replace it much?
Well, it, it is more expensive, but it, but there's less waste with tile, because when they make a cut per piece of tile, they can reuse that other half of the tile elsewhere in the classroom. In a lot of ways, when you center it, you end up with half a tile on one side and a quarter tile on the other side, or some combination like that. So, there's a lot less waste for the carpet tile. So, with a carpet roll, you have issues with dialots and roll out, hit the end of the roll. If you don't have enough, you can have mismatched carpet in there, and there's a lot more waste from that.
Sure. And I'm gathering, though, your, your biggest cost benefit by going initially with the more expensive tile is long-term, rather than replacing the entire room or an entire section, you can just go in and take these little tiles and replace them. Is that where you're really gap-gaining your...
That, the, the durability of the carpet installation time is less, so we save money on the labor. So, again, the material itself may be more expensive, but there's less material waste and there's less installation cost. So, the, the per-square footage cost is within a dollar, uh, between the two, so very reasonable from one to the other. The advances in carpet tile over the last 10 years or so brought it to the forefront of its becoming the new standard.
But I think, if, if I might, to give them a point, you, you're right. If you have a, a need to replace a portion of the carpet, you don't have to replace all of it. You just pull the tiles out that are damaged. So, there, there are savings in that regard.
Well, that's where I was trying to figure out where the biggest benefit was, and it seems to me it's the long-term benefit.
Go ahead, sir. Sorry, another question.
No, not a problem. Uh, this is a top pictures Cameron Elementary School. You can see the rippling and the failed adhesive underneath that creates a tripping hazard. Uh, and then down here in the bottom, we replaced the athletic flooring in the hand-shoe multi-furture. Uh, this picture was a good example of the problem that, that gentleman, that's a fresh as he's pulling that carpet up, just, or the flooring up by hand, and, uh, the dark underneath there, that's water and moisture. That, because of the holes and damage through the flooring, as they would clean and mop it, it just ran underneath and ruined the adhesive and whatnot. So, we went in and replaced it with, um, BCT tile, matching the school colors and whatnot. Looks really nice. Uh, in addition to the carpet and flooring projects this year, uh, we've gone through and we've looked at, um, we brought up a company from the Lower 48 to do a district-wide roof inspection. Uh, so they went out and they've walked every single roof in the entire district. They took four samples of every single roof, um, and schools have multiple roofs. Service High School, for example, has over 20-plus roof sections that are defined as individual roofs. So, they pulled over 16,000 floor samples, uh, during the summer project. Uh, in the fall, they're going to be coming back, uh, in about two weeks, and they're going to bring out a drone with an infrared camera. They're going to be flying that drone around these different schools to pinpoint areas of moisture and heat loss, both on the roof and then as well as the exterior envelope of the, of the building. This, all this data is, um, then going to get fed over to the capital planning and construction department, so we can use it for long-term planning, for roof replacement, bond replacement, whatnot. Um, this company, as well as others out there, they have a, um, restoration process for an exposed membrane roof. Basically, come in and they coat it with a special coating and then add a fibers membrane in there, and that will give up to a 20-year warranty on the roof. So, essentially, putting a new roof on top of our existing roof without having to remove all the current infrastructure. It, we can do it for a quarter of the cost of a new roof. Not every roof is eligible for that, and that's one of the reasons why we're going through this process. Um, the district did a survey with this company about 15 years ago, so we're updating it with new technology, new standards, and at the end of it, we'll end up with a really clean, really high-quality data that we can, um, better plan for our roof replacements. And then, sorry, go back on slide.
Got a question for you, sir. Mr. Rivera?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'm curious, how did the, um, school district review and make inspections of roofs before, before drones?
So, we, we have a, we have a PM project, a program, that every year we get up and we walk every single, um, roof, uh, and then we do our own visual inspection and whatnot. So, this is a, just a step beyond that. And then, we have a three-year program where we get up there and do more thorough cleaning and preventative maintenance.
And, uh, just a follow-up question, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Um, has the district seen cost savings from this drone program, or is it just in addition to what you're doing?
This is a, a new program we're just starting, so we haven't rolled out the, they haven't come up to do the drone inspections yet. Uh, we're not finished with it. We're about 75% through this project.
Okay. I'd be curious to know what savings the school district gets.
Thanks. Yep. Maintaining up to pilot an access control program at three elementary schools. Uh, we're looking at the exterior doors and replacing hard keys with, uh, key ops, unlike here with a scan badge and whatnot. Um, this increases the security at the schools. It's lockdown capable, so, um, the school can hit a button and lock all the doors on the outside of the building, um, that maybe unlock their time schedule. It's also essentially managed, so our safety and security department can manage and, um, view the status of these doors, uh, from the education center, from their command center back there. This is, uh, we, we did a hybrid approach for the installation of this project, using two contractors and then maintenance, uh, to do with some of the hardware installation. So, trying to build that knowledge of information in-house, as well as reducing some of the costs, instead of turning the whole project over to a contractor. This ties into the future that we're looking towards, which is a fully-integrated, um, video HVAC energy management system, uh, which is probably, you know, it's years down the line at this point, but this helps lay some of the foundational groundwork for that. Any questions for me on the...
Questions from Assembly or School Board members? Pretty comprehensive. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. So, one of the things that also need about the roof assessment program is that we're able to break it down into sections, not just looking at the whole roof anymore, so we can assess where each section of which roof is at. So, in the future, we can go back and, you know, prioritize which sections of that roof and have a better cost savings on that. So, um, I'm going to move into the, the planning and design aspect of, of where we're going with the construction program. Uh, so, for April 2017, I want to talk about what we've done in, in terms of looking at roof replacements, uh, heating, ventilation. So, most of, of what we're looking at now is based on, on safety, security, and, and keeping the envelope of the building safe. So, here's some of the current design projects. You can see it's kind of spread out throughout the district, uh, making sure we're addressing, uh, the most important needs first.
I'd like, I'd like to just briefly comment on the, the projects that, that, that Tom is addressing. These were projects that were approved on April 17th.
So, if you've got any questions about this brief, uh, please feel free to contact me or, or one of my managers, construction, planning, design, the numbers are, are listed there.
Any questions? Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so, be, because of, uh, slightly more, uh, rain than normal this summer, are we, are we on schedule on all these projects? Are we behind a little bit, or just, um, do we anticipate, uh, raining this summer or...
I don't know.
Or are we doing...
Normally, um, there, there is contingency time with the schedule, so we don't have any, um, major delays in any of our projects this year. Um, you know, that's something we consider in, in doing the planning for a project is it's going to rain in Alaska in summertime. Uh, so, we've not had any major setbacks due to weather.
Okay. Thanks.
Like you rightly reflect, we've been joined by Mr. Croft. Mr. Dunbar, you have a question, sir?
Yeah, this might be a, a larger topic conversation we want to broach right now, and perhaps you aren't the right person to answer this, but I know that, um, previously that we discussed that having on this agenda discussion of the new bus bond that's going into Petuniz District. I, it's on, it's not on the agenda now, so I assume we pulled it off for one reason or another, um, but there's going to be a number of meetings before our next joint meeting. So, I'm curious, first of all, to what degree the, your shop or kind of construction design in general, the school district is going to be involved in that process of if you guys are going to design this new, uh, bus facility in East Anchorage at the, near the Totem Theater property?
I'd like to, I'd like to, through, through the chair, just to, to address that specific question, the, the, the district has been involved, uh, with, with both the municipality and, and the developer that, that the municipality is, was signed on with. The district will not do the design. Uh, the district is working with the municipality to, to, to pass a development agreement. This is all very, very early in the process, but, but ultimately, will be the developer who does the design and the construction, uh, on behalf of the municipality.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Dunbar?
No, I mean, I guess I'd like to ask the school, whoever developed the, the agenda, why we don't have that as one of our items today.
Um, let's go back here for a quick second, and I'll tell you. Come back here if you'd like.
I'll, I'll wait till the next break. I'll rescind my question.
Okay. Thank you. Um, go ahead, ma'am.
Well, I'll, I'll just let you know that our agenda, um, was that the school board was going to be updated on the plan and what was happening on Monday at our, uh, work session. So, the school board hasn't even been updated on this, uh, uh, project yet. Um, our, our schedule was for Monday.
I did invite Star to attend our meeting, starting at 12 o'clock, because it's good if she's here. Yes, John?
Um, so you're doing solidway services buildings as well, maintaining those, and we have, that's one of our joint...
Through, through the chair, uh, to, to member Wellington. Yes, the, uh, the, the district's maintenance department is providing support to solidway services. Uh, they recently signed an agreement with the Port of Anchorage and currently in discussions with Merrill Field to provide life support.
So, are you doing similar stuff, drones over the roof and all this and that, or...
Uh, I don't, I don't believe that, that is part of the agreement right now. The, the, right now, the intent, maybe you can answer that.
So, we did meet with solidway services on, uh, roof inspections, and they are going to be looking at doing the same project there.
Okay. So, that's working pretty well, in which sense, you're going to ramp it up?
It's working great. It's working great. I would defer to Mr. Hargreaves to address that, but I think for both, speaking on behalf of the district, I think that arrangement is working very well. I would allow Marsete Pafford to address the, from the solidway services standpoint, but all educations are pretty happy about the outcomes as well.
Go ahead, John.
Just a comment, and maybe everyone knows this, but the superintendent said it's really a PR problem, because you do a bond, and hey, you're supposed to be doing that anyway. So, this looks good. It's kind of what everyone expects you to be doing. You've probably been doing much of this always, and it's really getting this out to the public before bonds come up and saying, look, this is what we're doing. I don't know how you do that, but it's really that PR problem to shoot you down.
Other questions? Yes, Star?
Well, and the other problem, I won't say problem, but the challenge with this is a lot of these funds have been taken out of our reserves and our general fund, which will not be there in the present. And so, henceforth, and I don't know if we've, if this is the right time to talk about moving forward with how we're going to fund some of those projects we're talking about with energy savings within our, talking about the loan that we were looking at doing, working with the municipality. I don't know if that's something we can talk about now, or if we're?
I will comment on that through the chair and to Board Member Marsete. We did work with the municipality, and our plan that we had presented to the board in regard to the energy savings, when we spelled it out over ten years, we needed a certain interest rate. Well, in working with the municipality as well, we just couldn't come to that interest rate. And so, our permission from the board was at a certain level, and so, we really have to come back to the board to say, well, we, it's not going to be as much savings over this ten years. So, we have to do the math again and the planning again, because even one percent interest rate over a million dollars is more money than we had approved. So, we're going to come back to the board in regard to that. It wasn't, the municipality couldn't even get to that number as well. So, you all helped us, but we just couldn't get there. And so, we're going to go back to the board for a Plan B, but we haven't done that yet, similar to the busing. Yeah.
Any other question, subject on this item? We'll move on to the next one then. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Chair, we just wanted to update you. I wanted to let you know that the start of the year has been a nice, fun start of the year. We are within two percent of our projected enrollment, and we did project using a demographer and a very complicated algorithm system. We projected two-hundred-seventy less students in the district, and, but what we projected, we look at meeting a hundred percent. And the reason that projection has to be key is because, as you know, students in the schools is what creates the revenue on the state side. And then, of course, that then has an influence on local contribution as well. So, it really is a matter of students coming to us, and that's the idea in regard to how can we be the best place to get an education for the educational dollars that are out there? Because certainly, there's lots of choices, and lots of our folks in the city choose elsewhere, and we want them to come back to us and choose us. So, that's a goal of mine, as well as the board's. But just wanted to share a bigger sense of what really has gone on in the last year. We shared with you last year that the cat was out of the bag, so to speak. We started our data dashboard, and it's public. So, you can go to the ASD website at the banner on the bottom, I guess that would be a footer, and go right to data dashboard. And if you can order on Cabela's or Nordstrom's, you absolutely can find out your neighborhood school, schools in your area, your district, overall in the district, any student demographic that you would like to see, any course that you'd like to see, any grade level. So, you can look at how is ASD doing? And for us, one of our goals was transparent accountability. Our board, internally, we built the code to create this dashboard, and the board decided, let's, if it's good enough for us, let's share these data. We didn't recreate the data. They were called extant data, meaning that they were already there. They were just in lots of different parts, and it would take you a day or two or a week to find all the information you needed. Now, you can drill down to how is East High doing with male students who are disadvantaged in science? You could literally go that deep. There are, the algorithm is built to meet FERPA regs, so you can't go lower than ten kids, because then they could be identified. But anything that you'd like to know, you could find right from us, rather than having to go around the state or to the national data basis to get it. We shared last year that the graduation rate was, if we rounded it up, it would have been eighty. We stayed flat. This was a year before last, so that's 2016 fiscal year. Last year was 2017, and this year's fiscal year, eighteen. So, we felt pretty proud of that, that we're moving along, but really, when we uncovered and looked a little deeper, we found that some of our student groups didn't do quite so well. So, where we celebrated the aggregate, when you looked below, and as you know, Anchorage is built off of great diversity, and our schools, when you looked at different student groups, we weren't doing well. And this is what they call a state-level disproportionality, or nationally, they say the achievement gap, that there's a difference between different groups. And just so you know, for size, Anchorage is about forty-eight thousand five hundred of the state's students. Matsus nineteen thousand, Faribault's about thirteen-five, Kenai eight-five, and Juneau about four thousand five hundred. So, all of these districts make up about seventy-five percent, seventy-four to seventy-five percent of the entire state's students' population. So, if you look, we had some student groups that were not, that had disproportionality. So, we had to look at ourselves, rather. We know that this isn't an innate-born thing. It's really systems organization, so what were we doing? We took a look at that and worked through some of the issues. A major indicator of graduation, we looked at as well, at that rate, attendance and grades, because grades get you credits, and credits get you graduated. It's in statute. It's in policy. So, when we looked, it was no surprise to find out that students in our system, and this was year before last, there were certain student groups that, when they came to our schools, weren't doing as well as others. And you can see Alaska Native, Pacific Islander, Special Education, and Black were the highest, meaning, again, there's a disproportionality between our overall what happens. We've had distress. It did come out last year, just an intense kind of struggle and anxiety that perhaps I had personally, a war on Fs was the word used, I think. I didn't have a war on Fs. These data just demonstrate that there's something wrong. And so, every, behind all these kids, and these numbers are children, so we really had to evaluate then, what's happening in our schools systematically where certain student groups aren't achieving. When we move forward, when we asked teachers, it was actually great, West High themselves challenged themselves, and at the first, these are semester data, but at the end of the first quarter, they asked themselves, teachers, why do we think kids are failing? And teachers suggested, actually have them written down, students don't show up to class, they don't do their homework, they don't care, counselors should have never put them in my class, and the middle school didn't prepare them enough. And these are, that's rhetoric, that's in our system. And then, they went to kids and say, why don't you, why aren't you succeeding? Why do you think you got an F? This was action research at West High. And the first thing, of course, that always comes up with teenagers is, things are boring. But you could put teenagers in front of a video game, it could be boring. So, we took off the whole boring as an answer for teenagers, and the other things that made the list were too many things that my family, I'm ashamed to ask questions in class. I feel dumb. I'm working, school isn't a priority, I have to do my family and my church first, and I was babysitting. And so, the differences between what kids are telling us and what we believe were very distant. And so, how do we bring that together in a school? We asked the kids then, so what would school look like if you had the support? They said, teacher support, that I could ask questions outside of classroom, not embarrassed. It's, I could use a different way to teach, and that if it made sense to me. So, we just started to dig a little deeper using these data.
Mr. Dunbar has a question, ma'am. Mr. Dunbar?
Yes, thank you. Because we have this particular lineup, because we're talking particularly about the Alaska Native community, I'm curious if, on those metrics you're mentioning, both hasn't asked, afraid to ask question, that kind of thing, does the Alaska Native Charter School perform better than the district as a whole on these kind of metrics?
I wish I could answer that question right now. The Native Charter School just goes to eighth grade, and this is seventh group, so they are inclusive in here, but I'd never pull those data out. The Native Charter School is not a high school, and these are just secondary.
Interesting. I thought it went to high school now.
No, just to eighth grade. So, I could pull those data for seventh and eighth grade to double-check. But in this, we really, I met a lot with Arise, Alaska Native group, with CITC, did quite a bit of work, engaged with the community on this. But that's a good question. I'll get those answers, because that's so good.
Superintendent, we got a question. Mr. Dyson, sir? Mr. Dyson?
Thank you. That's fascinating to me, and I think there's something in there to learn, and I appreciate you guys are after it. And I'd like very much to get a copy of that chart. It seems to me that the teacher answer you got on this was talking about externals. They don't do their homework, they don't come to class. The kids were talking about what's going on inside of them. To me, that's very instructive. And I'm just an old fisherman, but it's always seemed to me that many of the problems you have to deal with with the kids are from, have to do with the culture and the home life they come from, which you probably can't fix. And I wish we could, you know, but am I thinking?
Yep, that's, yeah, they have struggles that we don't.
And I'm not surprised. People that talk about racial discrimination and disadvantage being the problem of disparate outcomes, you know, need to look at the Asian thing. There's very few people groups in America that were treated any worse than the Chinese, and no one has ever had to do an affirmative action for those people. Members of California university system now is over, almost overwhelmingly, what we call Asian, you know? And there's something going on there. I think it's cultural traditions and values, you know, as well. But I really appreciate you doing that. And it'll be interesting in the out-years to see what you learned that you can do that is within your purview on all of that. But anyways, thank you for doing this.
So, we look at the academic side. The district also, through the school board and the school board association of the entire state, worked through what's called a climate and connectedness survey. And this is just to demonstrate the differences in the affective side of thinking too, as well as the academics. There's some questions, and I just pulled sampling. There's some questions in regards, so teachers answer the questions, parents answer the question, and kids, they can all participate. And on the teacher's side, when we talked about, are teachers in this school nice? Do teachers and staff believe that students can do good work? Basically, do we believe in our kids? You know, I wish it was even in the hundreds or whatever, but I mean, it's pretty high. It's eighty to eighty-five to ninety to ninety-eight percent. Do we feel like we're doing okay? When you ask kids, though, and this is the mix between where are the kids that we're serving today, one of the questions was, if I was absent from school, would anyone, not just a teacher, would anyone in this school miss me? Our high schools and middle schools are at forty-three, forty-five percent. Less than half of our kids believe that there would even be missed for a day. So, how is it in a system that we're going, 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 that we, so it's symbolized, some of the research on this, and I looked, and nationally, this is identical. It's not different. It is along the same lines about when a kid comes back to class, boy, school is, this isn't the same without you, I'm glad you're here. And so, somehow, there is a connectedness that needs to be felt, but obviously, kids, if they understood or didn't understand the question, they're telling us, I don't, they didn't think that that would happen. So, we just knew that we had to roll up our sleeves, and how is it that we could create an environment that we push kids, because the rigor has to be high, but that they're also motivated to meet those achievement goals? Through the destination 2020, we have only three years left to meet those goals, and it is a challenge I take seriously. And they're in those different categories, so performance, graduation, attendance. The way that we look at them, and this last year, we actually created initiatives. So, last year was the year that we spelled it out, take each board goal, what does it look like, establish a focus, and measure the effort. We say we measure what we treasure. And so, it used to be, these are the goals, but then the actions in the schools and district maybe didn't meet those. Now, we're saying, this is what we're doing. And then, it's not the district saying, do this. It's, look at your own data in your school, because we are data-rich but information-poor. We don't use it for information to change how we do business. So, each school designed, basically, with our support, how is it that things are going to change at your school? What is it that you see are some changes that can be made, or professional development and whatnot? Needless to say, as we went through the whole of last year, every time we had a vision of where we wanted to go, we really had to fix a problem that we didn't know we had. A lot of it was policy, outdated policy, how we operated twenty years ago, and systems in schools have changed, but we reverted back to the old policy. So, as we move forward, we take always, we find ourselves on our board taking a step back to kind of address an issue and then move forward again. It's just part of the process. So, we're trying to get to a space that 21st century learning actually looks like 21st century.
Mr. Dyson, sir?
Sorry, I'm slow. Dr. Dina, back, two charts there. Why do you think that the alternative school has the lowest on each of those?
For teachers and staff?
Negative, negative on the climate and connectivity.
Yeah, you know, I don't know, but it, the environment, the structure of it, the support.
But who's in the altern, who are the students?
Oh, the students' alternative is actually higher, of strongly agree there. Fifty-one percent are higher than the regular high schools. It's the staff are the lowest. The top is the staff, the bottom are the students. So, the staff has the lowest belief, that they believe that they believe in kids, and that, but the kids have the highest.
All right, so what's the difference in the students there?
You know what?
Who gets routed to an alternative?
You know, I think it's a little bit smaller and more personalized, that that might be it, you know? Because there, that, but even, only half the kids is still probably nothing to celebrate, actually.
But aren't the alternative programs for kids that are troubled?
Some are, and some are just choice programs. It's really different. Some are alternative. In some districts, it's defined as kind of a credit recovery, but alternative, as Anchorage looks at it, is anything that's not a comprehensive neighborhood school. So, alternative could be Northern Lights ABC.
Yeah, all right. May I ask a question on a different subject?
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, so, this is not a gotcha question. Historically, in this town, the, we've had schools that are overcrowded in a district or a boundary away or something. There's some that are underutilized. I assume we still have some of that. And in the past, and I expect things to be, you to be at least as creative, if not more so, than the past, just knowing your past performance, but if my supposition is correct, what are you doing with unused space? And are any of those problems partly solvable by moving the boundaries and getting all the parents' stickers and whatnot?
Certainly, the last part is yes. We could move that boundaries, and it's a, it's a big battle. And we did do some boundaries. They were the easiest ones to move. They were on base. We still had some pushback, but we did. What we're doing really is opening boundaries to allow kids that, if there's space in their school, to go. We are looking this year at connecting with nonprofits that are preschools, that if they need space and we can work it out, where they offer more opportunity for people in the neighborhood, actually have preschools in our schools to use them. So, we're looking at partnerships to use the space, because it really, I mean, when we talked about the construction, our city owns two billion dollars' worth of capital in buildings around the city, and that's what, you know, that past presentation was about, is how do we take care of them?
And how do they transfer used space?
Yeah, so we closed a school. We closed Mount Illiamna and moved those into, I, it was better instructionally, but it was also, Mount Illiamna was never claimed as a school site. And in the foundation formula, when you claim a school site and have a school number, it begins to generate revenue. Well, Mount Illiamna was a school that we sent kids to, but was never claimed as a school site. So, we're saving money in overhead and administration by having those in local schools. It made parents happy because their kids can actually go to a semi-neighborhood school. You know, it's about ten schools go into one. Our highest-needs kids did not go to neighborhood schools because we look at the least restrictive environment. So, the highest-needs school, we used empty space in Whaley. But, so we did close down the school this year, but at the same token, we opened up a program as well. We opened up the Alaska Middle College, and it totally pays for itself, and so, we didn't borrow from anywhere else. What those kids generated, that money, is the only money that goes to that space. So, we're just trying to, we're going to do the same. We're revamping KCC. KCC is not a school site, and the board wants it to be a school site. So, actually, that is.
KCC means?
King Corrigan Center.
Oh, yeah. I don't speak an acronym.
Yeah, sorry.
It's all right.
But we, you know, we are trying to figure that out and move kids around and open up slots. We're not moving portables, though, to make more space at a certain school. My idea is we need to create a school that people want to go to, and then you pull them back.
Mr. Dyson?
Yeah, thank you. So, we used to have a thing called a school within a school, and you're kind of doing that with a preschool thing. And I'm out of date, but it's certainly been a problem in the past in our town, is real estate for charter schools. And are you placing any charter schools within the unused buildings?
We haven't yet. There is opportunity, if you will. If we had a larger space, the two in most, well, one, Stream doesn't have, Stream Academy is a middle-level charter school, and they're actually at Whalen, ready space. We do need to look for someplace for them that's under a hundred right now. So, they're looking at their numbers. As they grow, they'll need more space, but the two charter schools that actually are in spaces that probably aren't going to last very much longer is Aquarian and the Alaska Native Charter School, or actually, they need some support. So, just in, they received schools that were old, that were rebuilt, but in discussion with just talking about needs, I meet with the group.
You're giving me very complete answers. A simple yes would have.
Yeah, yeah, so we are, it just is, yeah, we're in discussion with those. But the probably, the one that doesn't have space of their own, and good space, is probably the Stream, the most newest one, two years.
And just parenthetically, I've got two grandkids in the middle school, and we're an incredible program, and I just can't believe how efficient and how that works. And whatever you do over at Stellar, you gotta bottle it, sell it, that's the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dyson, Mr. Wilson.
What criteria makes a site a real school, then? Why is not KCC?
It has to do with approval from the state level. So I assume KCC started, my assumption is kind of to house, you know, it was provided by a bond, but it was never assigned a school. You need a number to create a school site in the formula and actually be seen, so kids aren't tested at KCC. So KCC doesn't have any test scores, they don't have any, they have a principal, so they have all the things that go into schools, but it was never established at the state. And so we are going to go back and do that, only you have to have all of the subjects, it has to be a full-scale school. Right now, over eighty kids there take online learning. And so the King Career Center, there actually are kids who go there full-size, but we've never, never used that formula. So I, just I'm intimately familiar with the formula and how best to make it work for our city.
Anything else, Sean?
So here's how we did. We had performance for reading, we met it in the youngest kids, but not in any other. This was a goal to do that, the board did put money towards that, and we began a new program. We hadn't had, we all know we moved to standards, and whether they're Alaska standards or Common Core, they upped the game in all grade levels. So what had previously been perhaps a second-grade standard is now a first-grade standard. So the rigor increased, but we didn't change our teaching and our materials or anything like that. So we invested in that this year and look to have these scores, this student progress, these scores change because students will learn more, if you will. On the next one, with performance, we're using our internal measures, measures of academic progress, where we don't wait to the state test to let us know. We know internally where we are quicker than any, you know, national assessment. But we're starting to use our tiered system. One of the biggest things with MAP is that you learn who actually is ready. We misjudge, so advanced learners even. We've been using the ninety-fifth percentile as a gate, actually, research and what we have now is quick data. It should be, at the seventieth percentile in math nationally, kids should be moved up to the next level, and we hadn't been doing that. So we're not only working on where kids are, if they're behind that group, but we're also looking at kids who need to be moved ahead, we found this out as well. As far as reducing kids who are failing, so we're meeting needs a little better, we're not lowering standards, that's not part of this, this process, it's figuring out supports, where kids are and how we're offering those and set up schools. So we actually decreased, and the areas that we took focus to, we actually made impact. And so these were the Fs last year, rather than the two years ago, when we started. So we just worked with kids in a different manner. We, moving forward this year, we are expanding choice, online and blended classrooms, dual enrollment, and career tech options. There's also an interest to look at trimesters, simply to offer more to kids, to be able to have more opportunity for kids to take advantage of the courses that are out there. So it's really not holding back, it's really looking at investing where we know kids will go. This was attendance, we really looked at attendance as, we wanted ninety percent kids' attendance, and we were going to do ninety percent of schools that had that. When we looked at that, it kind of didn't make sense the way we were measuring. We don't really have an attendance problem with everybody, we have an attendance problem with chronic attendance. So we weren't meeting where the attendance issue was. It was a fewer amount of kids missing a lot more days, not everybody missing. So we've just restructured our goals in this area and the data. The next one is, oh, just what we're doing, integrating attendance, being collaborative with communities, things like that. Looking at next year again, just so you know, the way we talk in our system is about the iceberg, and the tip of the iceberg is what people see, all the things about ASD that they love or don't love, or they see every day. But similar to an iceberg, we know that there's a lot more underneath the iceberg. And in our system, that is a public service system, we have a large amount of our revenue goes towards human resources. And we understand that unless the capacity is built in our human resources, we actually cannot, we won't improve, because the biggest thing about ASD is the people in ASD. And so we're focusing not only what it looks like to everyone else, but what is behind and underneath the iceberg. And it is high-quality education, positive customer experiences, and transparent accountability. We know in regard to quality education, it's not necessarily the content of a subject, it's really what happens in the classroom and how we bring kids along. Positive customer experience, we know that people leave us, and so we wanted to know why people leave. We've studied trends, and I shared, there was a big study that was done in Austin, Texas. Austin is a nice music little place, there's not high crime, great housing, but they were having people leave in droves, and they did find out that it was the manner in which adults were treated in schools, kind of my way or the highway, parents, rather than schools being for communities. And so people leave, not because necessarily of even what's happening in the classroom, they leave because what happens at the front door. And so we are addressing even those concerns, it's not just about the education, it's about the behaviors of us all and how we build capacity in people. And of course, the board is utterly serious when they talk about transparent accountability. That it's gonna, it is what it is, and our goal is to change it, you know? So whether it's our budget we're talking about, our data, we're just having a new sense. We know that individually, we contribute a storyline, but collectively, it's the ASD story, and we're the ones who have to tell the story. And everything under that iceberg is us, and so it has to be, we just have to improve, because we know the iceberg split too, and all what we do will be exposed at one day. So we just need to keep it at the highest level. We tell our story.
John, if you ever come and then forth?
A little bit, I mean, a couple slides ago, but you showed a dramatic decrease in apps. That's kind of big news, right?
It was, yeah.
You had to change the color for that slide earlier. So between sixteen and seventeen, there was a dramatic change.
Last year.
Did you change the criteria for the apps?
Nope, we did not change the rigor. What we did is look at, again, why are kids getting apps? A lot of it in individual schools, Bartlett, for example, made a dramatic, one-eighth of their school, he said, was involved in the football program. So what he did was made a mandatory study hall, and that every, they just changed the expectations for getting things done. So even if you did okay, you went to the study hall anyway, and they created better relationship, that in order to do this, you have to do this. They worked all during the year with teachers and created additional classes for kids and additional help. So it was very organic at each school, but they knew if this is your charge, who are your kids not making it? In Bartlett, it was Alaska Native and Polynesian were their toughest groups, and so they just looked, you know, and of course, they make a large part of the demographic of Bartlett. So they really just drilled down to, what are we going to do, created a team in the school to do it, and...
Who's they?
They, the teachers and the principal, the teams at the school.
Mr. Prince.
Mr. Prince, Shawn Prince, yeah, yep. So, and West did it differently, South did it differently, but they took their own story and what they were doing with their own kids, and said, if we want to change these outcomes, what is it that we need to address? Who in our system aren't doing well? And then they made sure they paid attention.
So if anyone here is looking for a headline, that would be a good headline.
Yes, that would be great, yeah. You know, we probably, we don't shout enough, we celebrated with principals, but we didn't globally just say, wah, you know? Pretty soon, the state will come out, that's just all internal data, pretty soon, the state will come out with graduation rates, and we did, we did well on those, I have them preliminary here, but the state hasn't put their stamp on them yet.
Is that all, John?
I'm good, thank you.
Are you done, bud?
But the good things, we have multiple, oh, sorry.
He's got one thing?
No, I'll wait till Lester.
Just multiple summer enrichment programs that are generally paid through funding of grants, many of our federal grants come through, and we keep kids learning all through the summer, and especially kids that are new to Alaska and new to the United States. The one thing that I've noticed with Anchorage, all the way from Girdwood, Eagle River, the community really does support schools, and they do it in a big verbal way of demonstration. So this is just United Ways, you know, partnership with the school district, the school district hardly has anything to do with this, but, you know, community groups come out and they want really good schools, and that's our promise then back. When we take money and use it for our mission, we need to promise back that we're going to make those gains, so. Good things, I wanted to talk about Gladys Wood. Did you know that Gladys Wood was the principal of Turnagain for so long? And that she had this school named after her because she was the first female principal in the state of Alaska? So the first female administrator in the state of Alaska came from Anchorage, and her name was Gladys Wood, but she was a principal of Turnagain. So just learning the history behind Anchorage is so deep and so thrilling that I thought you should know about that, but we opened up that school, renovated, and her daughter is to the right of me on that picture, to the left of me, really, and standing. So that's her daughter, Gladys Wood's daughter, that was able to celebrate. Her daughters are next to her, and her daughters are next to her. So Gladys Wood has passed on, but we made a large celebration at the school, it was nice. Again, we moved to a program called Capturing Kids' Hearts. I am not a touchy-feely person, I really always tell them I don't like this name, but this is really a program about building capacity of relations with kids. The idea that you have to capture their heart before you capture their mind, and it isn't touchy-feely, it is just readdressing how our schools look every day when kids enter. One of the things we do is shake hands as they come into your door. We want to get to know the kids, but we shake the hands and we teach them actually how to shake a hand, and so kids in ASD will leave knowing the business aspect of what a handshake looks like in the business world of the United States. Two pumps and a dump is how we teach them. And, but they, when people enter their classroom, they welcome them in, here's what I want to say to you. It is building the capacity for young adults to be young leaders, and so it's called Capturing Kids' Hearts. But it's not a program like a book that you go into the class, the people who are trained are the teachers, and it's how they come together to provide a better school. We mentioned the school-based behavioral, SBBS. See, Mr. Dyson, I'm the same way. SBBS. This was our, when we work with students, autistic kids or others that have self-awareness problems, and that you work to have them re-enter. All of these kids are going to be re-entering our community, so we want them to have the best education that they can to be continued and adults as well. So that's really part of the programs, and we celebrated that with the capital, but they're going really well. We opened up middle college, it pays for itself. These kids, one hundred fifty-two of them, after their sophomore year in high school, from every single high school around, we did have somebody from South even going to Eagle River, that's where the school's located. They passed by the college exam, Accuplacer access into college after their sophomore year, so they're taking college courses, dual-credit with high school courses. They have an opportunity to get an associate's degree when they leave. They can play sports back at their home schools, they can take a music class, they can take German back at their home school, but they're going here because they want this advantage, and it's a choice for parents. It's not a program for everybody, but we have one hundred fifty-two kids and look to build capacity in there to have it grow. So not only we're helping our kids, but we're also then supporting university with state money as well. And these kids take courses, and the return on the game is that they have to continue to do well, or they're exited out, so they're personally motivated.
Mr. Dyson, sir?
That's the thing, I have two grandkids, and one of my granddaughter is tutoring college students in German, who also got it, and just got back in Germany spending time in a Syrian refugee camp, polishing up her German stuff.
Wow.
And the other one is, looks like she's going to get admitted at Cambridge, you know? As a chronologically, a junior, astonishing.
And one of the things with the university, our partnership, is, just so you know, this is great for these kids, but we're getting in there as scouts and spies to figure out the whole math issue, how it's off between high school and college, and how, oh, we're not ready. So we're, we're getting in there so that we learn what is, and so we can go back and teach the other ten thousand kids in high schools. So it's really a kind of a, a learning school for us, a site of research for the kids that are going. But they can earn college, and all the transfer credits of kids who have been before have been taken from Kent State to any school, so UAA's transferable credits are pretty sound. Without addressing some of our stories, not all our storylines are rosy, we do have some tough stories as well, and the elephant in the room is really PEAK's assessment and the state testing, and a lot of times, we like to jump to, well, those aren't the standards we're teaching, and we don't like that, we don't like the standards we have. And the point is, is that kids are held accountable for, the rest of the nation is above Alaska. I wanted to let you know that our scores were not a surprise to us, because we use measures of academic progress, which is a nationally normal test, that also said, we're low status, low growth, as well as an A, says Alaska's forty-ninth out of fifty. So these are not out of line with any other piece of information, it's just a new charge for us to address what are the standards. When you're in a standards-based system, you have to systematically address what kids need to learn for the next level, it's not always what we want to teach. And so we're really having that cultural shift in our schools about what are kids held accountable when they leave us, as they go to college, or military, or other job-related internships and whatnot. So we're just, we haven't been not teaching, it's not about ethics. We teach all the time, we work, you know, teachers work, you'll see, you know, our schools have cars there late at night and on the weekends, teachers are putting in the time, we're just coming to a sense of saying, well, what are we teaching kids, and what is it they need to learn, and what are we held accountable to get them to the next step? And we're addressing those, and we're having those conversations. They're very, they're different, and so they're difficult, because this isn't, there's no blame, we have to get beyond that and just say, what are we going to do next, and how can we get there?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Dr. Bishop, then, your interpretation would be that students are learning, but not necessarily being tested on what they're learning?
Well, they're, they're being tested on what the state and the nation has said that they should learn for college-ready, and not even just the state, I mean, the state standards and the cut scores were created by teachers. So it's, teachers of Alaska came up with the standards and worked through them, and then came up with the cut scores for the assessment. So our own people created that mark, and we're still all not getting there. So it's really not this outside entity, but you could say that we've been working very hard, we teach all day long, we go home tired, kids go home tired. But what we need to start addressing is, how specifically, every day in the classroom, can we capture what kids are supposed to learn? And so to your point, yes. Sorry, I keep answering it in a long way. So these are our scores.
Ms. Morris has got a question.
Yes.
Comment?
No, and actually, I could, I could like to finish, but I do want to say something about this. You know, this is my second year on the school board, and prior to that, for those of you that know me, I follow the achievement gap very closely, and have looked at our, the district's plans to address the achievement gap, and have always testified, how can you always have the same plan and just have phase one, phase two, phase three, and expect this different results? I can say, for the first time, I feel very confident that we are doing something different, that we are doing something, I feel, that we are going to see changes in our reading scores and our math scores. And it's not going to happen like a hundred percent overnight, but we're going to see changes, because we're doing things that we have never done before. It's different, we're addressing the, you know, when we talk about capturing kids' hearts, it's a proven fact, you have to develop a relationship with that child, because you want them to come to school, you want them to do well, and they will do well if they have a relationship with that teacher or someone in the school and that sort of thing. We are upping our curriculum, we just put in a new English Language Arts curriculum, we haven't had one in thirteen years. We have instructional coaches, I went to one of their professional development training yesterday, and the thing that most impressed me about it is, it's not just about the curriculum, it's about communicating with the teachers, because you've got teachers that have been teaching for thirty years, and it's a little difficult, might be the same way, if somebody came in and said, okay, you know what, we're going to do this a little differently now. Not that you're doing it wrong, but this is, you know, this is what this calls for. And, you know, rightly so, they're thinking, hey, I've been doing this for thirty years, it's been working, but we're actually teaching the instructional coaches how to present that, how to talk to the teachers, so that it's not confrontational. And I think that's so important, because... And I think that's so important because we've not done that before. And so I am very excited about what I potentially hope to see this year. And so I hope when you see these scores and that you know our past, that you're going to be as excited as we are. And I just wanted to say that because I've been following this for a long time.
Thank you, Star. Go ahead, Superintendent.
This is, thank you. This is our English Language Arts and our math is less successful. The green line looks, the longer they're with us, the less they know. But we are going to change that. And, but if you look up at the top, the district is almost 27,000 and the state, of the kids tested and the state is 70,000. So do you see how significant ASD is in the bigger picture of just the state's success? And so we take it seriously. And it's not that, like I said, I mean, it isn't about, let's find ball, let's do this. It's really about changing the way we do business, just like Star Marsette mentioned. It's, it's a different game and, and when I went to school, today should look differently than when I went to school. And so, or even when I taught, the world looks different. So, you know, I've shared before, we used to focus on content. We were the content experts. Content's free and you could get it from your smartphone. So where are teachers placed in this system of learning now? And it, and it really is bringing kids to the next level using all those tools that we have out there. Because, but my place as the content expert isn't as, it wasn't, it was pretty significant before, but as a teacher, I'm not the content expert anymore because kids can get content anywhere they want now. It might not be good content, but they can get it anyway. So, but, so we have to change how schools address 21st century and I think really for our city, for our state, for our nation. We have to have kids who try, who are entrepreneurs, who think, who can solve problems, who design things, who can fail and get back up, dust themselves off and figure it out again. I mean, and we, for too long, have just taken care of them. So we're really creating this, a different system.
Mr. Wilton, sir.
You know, you say content's free because you always have your phone, but when they're tested and they have their phones, I mean, so if you don't teach them to memorize that stuff, then they take the test, they fall over.
Well, actually, a lot of the tests aren't like memory stuff anymore. Of course, in primary, you have to have skills, you have a foundation. So math facts are a must, writing and cursive is a must, reading is a must. But actually, a lot of the assessments are, where they, even in third, fourth, fifth grade, they're reading and it's not, when you and I took tests, it was fictional. So what they're reading is, the tests are now made up of non-fictional paragraphs or research articles or something. And then they're asked to synthesize. So the game is up from it. And certainly, there is memorization. There is a sense of automaticity with learning, but the manner in which they're tested is vocabulary. How do I figure out what that word means by what I know about the Latin root? How do I? So it really is about greater thinking than it is about memorization on these assessments now. Even the SAT looks different and so we have to adjust that. But that doesn't mean memorization of facts is absolutely, it has to be sound. Because if you can't, when you hit algebra, if you can't add, subtract, multiply and divide, you've hit a glass ceiling in algebra. So we're not going away from standard skills, but once we get those, we have to build the capacity for the kid to think. Yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Wilton?
No, thanks.
Go ahead, Superintendent. Thank you.
Yep. And the science, not to burst anyone's bubble, it looks better in science, but these are actually the old standards and the old test. The others are from the new test and the new standard. So the standards in Alaska are being rewritten now and of course, they're going to jump. They're going to, we are asking kids to do more than we have in the past. That is the true story of public education. And so we're adjusting to that. This is the graduation rate, that's preliminary. It'll be announced in October when the state puts their thing on it. But all students, we went from 79.7, I had it rounded up on the old slide to 80. Last year, we did 81.4. But the biggest success stories we have, if you look at African-American, we, when, the way that you narrow the gap is that the, the different student groups have to increase more than the mean or more than the average. And so if you look at, if we only increased by a point or so, one and a half points in all students, African-American almost did five points, five percentage points. So by, you narrow the gap when certain groups make better. So the ones that we said, let's put our efforts, let's find out why they're not doing well and let's address that, we improved. Special education, African-American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander and I say AK Native, so, and special ed. So we know we can do it when we work as a system to address it. And so these are, you know, our group with Alaska natives just clapped for a long time and they haven't clapped in the past. So it's a good thing.
Mr. Rivera, sir.
So these are all really good numbers, except for two of them, and I'd like to get your thoughts on this. So I see two or more races and limited English proficiency. Those two numbers have gone down. Do you know why?
Migrant.
Migrant, yeah. So limited English proficient, we do know that group. And we did a study last year to look at, we actually followed kids, administrators followed kids around and limited English proficiency. So you know, our city, of kids who come to school, 80% of them speak English coming to school, 20% don't. And those, the 20%, of course, we've shared, there are over 100 languages. So it's not about learning a language and being able to teach them. It's about what kind of pedagogy teaches someone of a different language. What we found in our schools is that what we've been doing is lowering the standard for limited English proficiency because, you know, we wanted them to feel welcome or whatever. And as you know, if you hablo español, so when you're learning another language, when I went and studied in Mexico for a little bit, my cognition was still high, but my ability to communicate was low, right? And to understand. And so what we're doing is, some of our, a lot of our kids actually have the scruples, you know, they're, they're pretty bright, but we're teaching them at such a low level. It's again, we're not teaching what they need to know. That was one thing, we found at the high schools, the, the level of rigor was super low for limited English proficient. But it was because we were doing what they could do in English, rather than figuring out, how do we keep the standard high and, and transition? What are those pedagogy skills or those teaching skills that we could use to keep the content high? They also, our limited English proficient kids on average only had two opportunities to speak during the school day in English. And so you know, in learning another language, you have to almost like be engaged all the time and make yourself talk. And so it doesn't mean putting kids in like, you know, one of our schools, immersion schools or anything like that. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking, kids have to get more opportunities to speak. So we have, teachers and other staff have to charge them with creating opportunities to speak. When they only spoke two times a day, there, there's no wonder they're not learning English fast enough. So a lot of that, that we studied, I do know, is our teaching practices and we're addressing those with pedagogy skills that transition, not only for limited English, but are really good for all kids who may not know, understand what you're talking about.
Mr. Dunbar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So 81.4 is preliminary. Let's assume it's going to stay over 81. How many years back would you have to go to find a number higher than that?
It was never higher than that.
So this is the highest graduation rate?
Since they've been collecting.
Since we, and when did we start collecting?
Well, with NCLD, in 2001.
Okay. So this is the highest graduation rate that we have measured since 2001?
Nationally and have to report to the state, yes. We could probably look and find some, but collectively recorded as a nation.
Anything else, sir? Thank you, ma'am.
And NCLD is No Child Left Behind, sorry. And then that changed to ESFA. But it's all from the Elementary and Secondary Act that Linda Mace Johnson did in the 60s. It's just a reauthorization.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Dyson.
Has anybody ever looked at where kids within the military family were often transient every three or four years? Do you have any ideas about how they do?
Actually, in our schools that have high military, they do well. They do quite well.
We've got them all, Amy and I.
They do well.
I was one.
They do well. And they adjusted.
Look how she turned out.
That's okay, Amy, I was one too.
They do well. And interestingly enough, just so you know, when we opened the new middle college, we really are kind of, Marty wanted to learn about it. So Marty Lang, principal of Eagle River, is really going over to the high school and being at that high school and learning about what's over there so he can bring back information. So I mean, it's really been a group effort to do that. And Kathy Moffett actually began one in Matt Sue and two in those methods. And we look next year to offer that at Casey C, very similar, because they're co-located with university. We're working on that now. The board says, get it done. We're working on it. Yeah.
Star.
So one of the things I wanted to say also is that, you know, next year, it's going to be a challenge again with funding because even if our budget isn't cut, it's going to, you know, we're probably looking at flat funding. And just to give you an example, our classroom sizes are increasing. I just went over to Campbell, which is our new STEM school. We have a kindergarten, kindergarten, first grade, 24 students with no aid. And so that's a little challenging when you're doing a new program. I know that we've got five classrooms over there that are empty and we have 72 children on a waiting list, but we don't have the money to hire a teacher. So, you know, we are challenged and we are challenged financially. And we can only take so much money out of our, our budget. So I guess what I'm saying is, even though we're, we're trying to do the things that we can do to, that are innovative and that are keeping our district going and are increasing our, our student scores and those type of things, we can only take so much money out of our reserves as you guys can too. So I would hope that when legislative goes back, you guys would be our champions and would help us in whatever we can do. Because it is starting to affect the classrooms. Our high schools are now looking at 35 to 45 students in a classroom. I just talked to Diamond and in their lab, it's set for 24. They actually have 35. It's becoming a safety issue. And, you know, it, it all boils down to money. And so I just wanted to throw that out there because we are doing some great things, but don't think that the dollars that we're not getting aren't hurting us.
Well, actually, flat funding is going backwards rather than going forward because flat funding with the CPI is always being reduced. The CPI just eats you up alive.
Yeah.
Mr. Dunbar.
Thank you, Mr. Trainee. Dr. Bishop, you had mentioned before the demographer had estimated there would be 270 fewer students, but you said that was a little bit off. Do you know, what is the actual number?
No, we, 270, they have projected and we're off of that. But we believe by the count period, the way, manner in which you receive funds on the state is a 20-day mean from October, about October 1st to October 20th, take out the weekends. But it has to be 20 school days. So we look to be at that number. We're just off of it right now. It takes, we usually get more kids in when hunting's over and everything. So we look to meet that number at 270 below. But next year, they project lower as well. I mean, we have an ongoing. So I think we just, under 100 kids we need to make up to make that, which to us, in our trends over the previous years, we believe we're going to make our number that we do it on. But it was 270 less than last year. Yeah.
Andy and then Suzanne, Andy?
This is sort of a follow-up.
We've been joined by Mr. Steele. Just for the record, we've been joined by Mr. Steele from the subway. Go ahead, Andy.
A little bit of a follow-up to what Star said, but also in, in looking at all these numbers, as someone that's spent time in the classroom, one of the questions I always had for our students that went away to competitive schools and came back was, once you got there and you got settled in, how did you feel? And, and I have yet to run into an ASD graduate that said, man, I was, I was just outclassed and blown away. Invariably, they've reported back that they weren't ready for the place they were at. So, so we're looking at these broad averages and sometimes I sort of get the idea that that's how it is through the whole district. There, every day and every bill, there are incredible students doing great things. We also are coming up short on some students that are very difficult to engage and educate. And when you boil the number together, sometimes you just get the feeling that like it's all one temperature through the district. But if you look at, at our rock stars, we obviously have great talent from the citizens and in the educators that are doing it. We also have some huge challenges and I think we're zeroing in on how do we lift the other side of it. But the examples that Mr. Dyson gave, we have some kids that just do remarkable things and they're finding success here. They're finding what they need as they even go out and work.
Suzanne, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question for Dr. Bishop. I was wondering if you know how many students who live in the district are being educated outside of the district?
Why, do you have the number, to the chair, to number LaFrance or? 2,700 go to statewide correspondents. So that's just statewide correspondence. We could look into our private schools, whether it's Pacific Northern Academy, Grace, ACS and others. You know, I'm not sure. And I am a person that says, you know what, I believe that people should have a choice in what's best for, for kids to get where they want to go. But the thing is, is I want to be sure that, I just want to make that, the best choices for parents occur here. So there's probably, I mean, there's probably 4,000 at least that don't choose. But one thing, the middle college, one school of 152 brought back 19 kids.
24.
What, 24 now?
24.
24 now, 24 kids. So, you know, back to the district because it's a program that they had wanted and they had left and gone out and then came back. So every 24 counts.
Oh, just on the statewide correspondence, I mean, there are options for correspondence programs within the district, right?
There are charter school correspondence programs. We really haven't built out the flexibility that some of the programs statewide have had. So I'm working with our correspondence charters to really create a better platform to be able to really meet families' needs of what they're looking for in correspondence. And it's really not correspondence, it's really blended learning now, it's choices. Rarely is it just, I sense something in the mail and I correspond like that. It's mostly all blended learning and opportunities where they're purchasing courses at different places.
Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm wondering what type of program or ideas you have to, to work with parents? Because what I've found talking to people, that there are adults out there with children in school that didn't do well in school themselves, didn't like school themselves, have sort of a negative attitude about school that seems to rub off on their, on their children. And so that makes it more difficult for them to succeed in school.
We have parents that are.
So it becomes a generational thing, which I think possibly. And so I think that's going to be, that's a little difficult hurdle to try to get over. What kind of outreach are you working on to try to help solve?
Well, all the schools that receive any kind of title funding have to have a parent outreach as part of the federal program for receiving it. So quite a bit of our schools do that just as part of a regulation. But really, the, the second goal that we had in regard to what's the bigger picture, that customer service. A lot of times, if they had experienced something as a child that was negative and then they come back to register their kid and really, we have such unbending rules and we say we can't help them. Or like, we had an example where we were really busy with someone and the response was, have you checked my kid for this? Well, I have 84 kids in front of you. And we know that if we were in a, in a restaurant or at a store and somebody said, when we asked for help from someone, they said 84 people are in front of you, you would have turned around and walked right out. And so we're addressing those things in our people, that that's not how schools can be anymore. And we shouldn't have been that way in the first place, but because we are so busy and, you know, what's a different response that we're giving and are treating our stakeholders who send their babies to us? How would we treat them? You know, there's a different way to address it. So we're doing the affective side of actually teaching what customer service is to our people as well as having global kind of math nights and, and it's all based around food because people come in for food and gathering and fun. And then we slip in the learning about, you know, like middle school parents sometimes don't think that they can go into their kid's backpack or their kid's room. And I'm like, no, 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 it's okay. It's okay, if your kid isn't doing something, it's okay for you to go in their backpack. I mean, we're literally sometimes teaching parents to be, you are the parent, it's okay to ask what your child's doing. It's almost like, well, that's their privacy. And I was like, but you have the backpack. Go on. That is your room, it's in your house, you can go in there. But it's almost a disconnect between parents and their students sometimes. So, it's on all levels, but we're really trying to say, how do we want to work with kids, and then how do we teach those skills, rather than just sometimes just having a right or wrong answer? There's so much gray in our world that we need to understand where people are coming to us from.
For the record, you've been joining me, Mr. Constance. Mr. Wilton, you've got a question, and then Mr. Dyson has one.
Also, Mr. Steele.
Sorry, Mr. Steele's got one there.
You're just backing up a little bit. So, you're saying, so there's a private program that does correspondence learning?
It's, through the chair, it is, it's a state-funded. It's called IDA, it's the largest one in the state. But they're allowed to state, so twenty-seven-hundred of our students leave us to do that.
So, I guess, and you're, so they're leaving you, you don't want them to leave, so you want to replicate that to some extent within the school district. But if they're doing a good job, why not say, here's a good program for you, we'll focus on where we're weak, instead of trying to have a program?
Well, that is partially where we're weak. Where people want more and more is kind of flexibility. And so, a lot of our things are, if you're in this school in this zone, you go here, and the world is really flat now. And so, what those programs have done is offered opportunities that are vast, and so really, how they've adapted has been faster than really bureaucratic systems. And so, we don't necessarily want to replicate exactly what we're doing, but we know that there's things that public wants, because we want the best for our kids, that we need to understand that that's really where the world's going. And so, we need to be ahead of the game. So, yeah. And, you know, a lot of families just, a lot of them are, they're in private hockey, that they travel, so they need an opportunity for their kids to learn. And sometimes, we just have such these rules, nope, you're gone, you can't. And why wouldn't we work with someone who travels? I mean, our whole, a lot of our workers in our state are two weeks on, two weeks off. Why wouldn't we see that as where we are, and then address it in our schools with policies or programs that could? And it doesn't mean everybody has to be that way, but we've really been one way or another, and we really need to be, why do people choose what they choose and then offer it? So, I'm not trying to recreate a wheel, I'm just trying to bring us to the next level. But that's a great question.
Mr. Dyson, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Wilton, in Dr. Bishop's previous life, she had a concept that all the kids in the borough were our kids, any way we can help them, including tutoring, access to libraries, all the activities and so on. And I'm delighted with that attitude, and I think it's a healthy one. Dr. Bishop, I have several family members that are teaching in the district, or on one level or another, and lots of friends. It used to be that teacher dissatisfaction was not being able to control behavior in the classroom, and disproportionately having the classroom disrupted by kids that were not, quote, "prepared" to be there. I'm not hearing that much anymore, but could you briefly summarize how you got you all deal with the disruptive student, and if the trend is down?
I think we're addressing it earlier on, and again, part of the name of social emotional learning sometimes like cringes, because it's like, is that, you know, butterflies and unicorns and fuzzy things? And it's really not, it's actually teaching self-awareness, grit. It's teaching kids early on how to work with each other. And honestly, it's, we're working with adults, because most of the time, when kids do something that are just like our own kids, or knuckleheads sometimes, if they do something, our reaction to that gases that kid up. And so, what we're doing is almost removing, taking the value statements and judgments out of that. And like at the high school at Bartlett, they just ask questions. What are you doing? What are you supposed to be doing? What does it take to get there? And so, they're just, even with the capturing kids' hearts, it's questions, rather than, you know, we're just not getting ourselves worked up a lot. So, we're just learning different ways to work with teens and younger kids, and incorporating some of those practices about group work, or not group work, or rules, why we would follow rules. And it's called social emotional learning, but it's really the affective side of how do I do school? It's really how to employ ability skills. When I show up on time, and I don't show up on time? If I don't do my part, what happens to everybody else? But it's teaching them in a, in a way that, through the curriculum, through the work, they're learning that. So, they're really, we've really done a lot with that side of the house, if you will.
And it's better.
Yeah. And even in the high schools, because really, when I get like, oh, there's some kids that, you know, they just, it's their pleasure to get you, and it's just kids. And, you know, if you don't get upset and create good relationships with them, they just, they want to do well, really, in the end, so.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Steele, sir. Do you have a question? Somebody said you had a question.
I did.
Okay. Questions from Assembly members, schoolroom members?
It was very long-winded, but thank you for the...
You did a great job. How is the union contract going with the teachers? I'm hearing rumbling out there.
I have a feeling it's not going to come to a closure at this point. We're very far off.
Is it overdue? I mean, are they...
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we've been bargaining last year. There was a hiatus over the summer. We started again the first few weeks of school, but the distance is pretty great, not in the terms of the contract, but in things that we're always amiss about, and, which is the biggest thing we don't necessarily control. And who knows from there? I haven't gotten the latest update, but I know it didn't go well. It was just yesterday, so.
Well, just as a member of the Assembly, let us know what help we can be with the legislature, because we're one town, and we all care about our kids. I've got children, grandchildren here, who knows, probably more than most people, grandchildren. And I want to make sure we get the best education for them we can. So, let us know what kind of help we can be in June. Yes, sir.
Well, the follow-up on my thing that I've spoken to several times now, is I, there's a very serious legitimate concern about the school cost differential factor of the foundation formula for schools. Talking to folks over at the university that did the last study, the Iser folks, Institute of Social Economic Research, they did a preliminary study a few years ago of the cost of educators to school districts, how much we have to pay teachers. And those numbers were very concerning to the Anchorage district, that we're not being fairly treated within that formula. That's the biggest single factor in the school cost differential. And I reached out to Iser this week, and I'm trying to get them to tell me how much it would actually cost to do a new survey. And at some point, it might be advantageous that we think about moving forward to getting a survey done, if it's, you know, economically feasible, if, rather than sitting around waiting for the state to agree to do it. Because that would give us intellectual ammunition that might be very, very persuasive in identifying the facts of what's really going on there.
Well, Dave, if you can find out what Iser would request, let us know.
I'm working on it.
Let's see what we can do to help you. Because if we get the foundation formula changed, it benefits us, because right now we're disadvantaged with that formula.
And the significance there is really significant.
It's millions of dollars.
It could be tens of millions of dollars, which is one of the reasons that we were forced to reduce ninety-nine teachers left.
Let us know, Dave. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Honeman. Sorry, Felix. I know.
Follow-up on that. The Superintendent Matsu, a couple of weeks ago, was on TV. It was a little, their statement was a little bit, but they were saying they felt like their students mattered as much as, say, Anchorage School District students. So, they were advocating for more funding. What they didn't make real clear is, they were advocating for funding from their local government, which does not fund them to the cap, because Anchorage has historically done for a long, long time. It kind of made it sound like there was a disparity in how the state was treating Matsu's students. And of course, it's actually the opposite. Matsu itself is in essence taking a shortcut and riding on this fund balance that exists, and kind of squawking about it all at the same time. And of course, as it went forward, they didn't move to allow vote on a tax that would support schools. Yeah, it's impacting Anchorage in a real serious way, and they're unwilling to address it themselves, as Anchorage has done.
David, you said, if we find out what Iser wants, let us know, we're happy to work with the audit, because it's our benefit to get that form looked at again.
I really appreciate that, and I just want to follow up what Andy said. We're so grateful to the community of Anchorage for contributing the maximum legal amount to our schools. Not all the communities around the state are doing that. Matsu's not. And the Anchorage Assembly and the mayor, we thank you very much for being willing to invest that in education.
Mr. Rivera, sir.
Thank you. Hopefully, I'm not opening up a can of worms here, but I don't think...
And you want to move your adjourn?
No. The presentation on the school start update was given, and I was wondering, it's on the agenda. So, I was wondering if there was an update on that.
Through the, are you meaning school start times?
Yeah.
Okay. In regard to school start times?
This was your start update.
Yeah. So, this was the school start update, but the school start times, we are, Monday at the board meeting, that was one of the board's goals that they'd like us to do. We're gonna engage this year with really crowdsourcing it. We know what the research say, and so, we're looking at really bringing in the community and the change that, it'll affect everything, you know, our roads, or this, or that. I mean, it's not, it's simple to change the time, the outcomes of that, or it's gonna be growing pains for a city this size. So, we're engaging this year to come to a recommendation to the board in February, January, February, so that we can adjust to it, using the information that's out there. Folks have already been, you know, because it's been on the news, sharing their ideas, we have the research. You know, parts of it are very clear, it's just that we're hearing from the secondary, and we need to engage people with younger children, because they will have to change in order to do this. So, we look to make a recommendation to the board by the semester to engage further. And, you know, that's where we are with it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Because we were talking about the social science research on start times, and I'm also familiar with that data, and I think it's very clear. The other thing I remember, and I haven't done education policy in a number of years, so perhaps the science now is different, but I remember at the time that retention over the long summer break, particularly math retention, is a major issue. When you're looking at that chart that showed every year we have the people, they seem to know less math. It's not actually the case, but they know less comparative to where we'd like them to be. And I'm wondering to what degree retention over the summer factors into that, and if you guys are engaging in that same conversation you're having now with start times about, you know, moving to a couple of shorter breaks, for example. And that was very challenging, given people's summer schedules.
Yeah. We actually haven't, through the chair, we haven't looked at that changing the school year, but what we have looked at was, and actually, actually, the school year, we are gonna put in that school start time about starting before Labor Day, after Labor Day, because that continues to come up as well. So, anything about school start, we would address. But we're attacking this from a different way. There's, we're working with UOA to open up some of their online opportunities for kids to just practice math and use their ACES, which it's called, where it's an assessment that gets you placed into classes. But if you don't, it doesn't redo whole things, it shows you pockets where you're not doing well. And then it's almost like a game that kids kind of engage in. So, we're looking at kind of open sourcing some things that kids would practice, whether it's, because, you know, having, changing a calendar like that, like, you know, it's like, what can we do now with it, knowing the curriculum and what kids are doing? So, we're looking at kind of open sourcing some of the math, not only in the high schools, but also throughout the summer, just having no time limit on that. And then kids earning credit, or badges, if you will, kind of what makes them roll